Thanks for joining us. Today we are presenting the 2018 warrant articles for the town of Wolfboro. Let me tell you who's here on the stage. We have all the way to my right, Town Manager Dave Owen. Next to him is Selectman Dave Senical. And then we have Dave Bowers, myself Luke Furtinberg, the Chair this year. Next to me is Lynda Murray. And finally, all the way to my left is Brad Harriman. Today we are going to review all of the 2018 warrant articles for the town of Wolfboro, starting with Article 9, which is the Library Renovation and Expansion Project.
Dave Bowers here on Article 9, the Library Renovation and Expansion Project. I've been a fan of the library for many, many years. And I like to call it Wolfboro's Living Room. It's a place you can go and relax, bring your kids, bring your relatives, look up genealogy information, borrow books, borrow whatever you'd like. But in recent years, it's deteriorated. It was built quite a few years ago, and the plumbing system, heating system, roof, and a long list of other things are either obsolete or malfunctioning. The plan is to increase the library capacity by expanding it in a modern, state-of-the-art project, which should last for generations. There is time still to make a donation. The library offers naming rights if you'd like to have a room or something named after you or a relative. And I urge you to vote yes when this comes up.
Article 9, Library Renovation and Expansion Project. Reads as follows. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $5 million to be funded as follows. Bond issued not to exceed $4,855,000. Said bond amount to be reduced by donations and pledged donations currently estimated at $1,200,000 generated by the Wolfboro Public Library Foundation. And to authorize the selectmen to transfer the balance of the library reserve fund currently estimated at $22,000 and the balance from the Wolfboro Public Library's building fund currently estimated at $123,000 for the purpose of renovating and expanding the Wolfboro Public Library building to include both the interior and exterior of the building, parking lot, and other site improvements. And to include the costs for architect services, engineering services, construction manager services, and contingencies. Further, to authorize the issuance of not more than $4,855,000 of bonds or notes for this purpose in accordance with the Municipal Finance Act, RSA Chapter 33, such sum to be reduced by any federal, state, or private funds made available therefore, including the aforementioned pledged donations. And to authorize the Board of Selectmen to negotiate and issue such bonds or notes and to determine the rate of interest, maturity, and other terms for this purpose. Further, to authorize the selectmen to accept the gift of all pledged donations currently estimated at $1,200,000 generated by the Wolfboro Public Library Foundation to be used to offset the costs of the project and reduce the amount needed to be bonded. The estimated tax rate impact for 2018 is zero. For 2019 is half a cent per thousand dollars of valuation. And for 2020 is 16 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of nine to zero. A three-fifths majority vote is required.
I'd like to introduce Cindy Scott, our librarian, has been for a number of years, who is hands-on in the project. And she's going to go through it step-by-step, explaining and illustrating what is in store.
The library project has been many years in the planning. And we have two major issues with the library. One is the way the building functions, and the second is the actual facility itself. So first of all, I want to talk about the fact that the library is very heavily used. We have about 90,000 visitors per year. That's up from 2002, when we had about 60,000 visits per year. The way the library is being used has changed dramatically in the last decade as more and more people come to the library. And we have about 90,000 visitors currently, averaged over the last five years, compared to 15 years ago, when we had about 60,000 visitors per year. A lot of people come in and they use the library in ways where they spend a lot of time in the library. And we have less seating now than we did when we opened. The library was designed for a different population group and a different time, and we need to have a more flexible and larger library to provide the services that people are asking for. Additionally, we have issues with noise and a limited space for people to work in. We have storage deficiencies. There's safety issues, and we have exceeded the design capacity. Also, we have a number of mechanical and structural issues wrong with the building, including major roof issues, issues with the electrical system, with the plumbing. We have many roof leaks. We also do not have much in the way of insulation in the building, so it's not an energy-efficient building. And we have problems with water on the site, management of water on the site. Some of the pictures that I have show some of the issues with the roof. Also, the roof flexes, and when we get a certain amount of snow on the roof, we have to shovel it. And we have regular roof leaks, which we have to strategically place buckets in order to catch the water when it comes through. The benefits of the expansion renovation project will include bringing the building up to code, dealing with the electrical system, replacing the heating and ventilation system, and it will create a better functioning space that will serve the library and the users well into the future. This is a picture of the exterior of the library, and it will include an expansion on the front of the building and a rearrangement of the interior of the existing building. Also, we'll be able to remain open in the original part of the building while we're under construction, except for a couple of weeks when the roof is being replaced. This is the area that is going to be the expansion, and this is the original building. The parking lot will also be expanded, and all of the drainage issues will be brought up to code, and the site water problems will be dealt with on-site. If approved by the voters, we'll begin doing the design work in summer of 2018. Construction should begin on the addition in the fall of 2018. After a year, we would move into the new part while the original part was being renovated, and then the library building would reopen fully to the public in early 2020. The budget is $5 million, and it includes the contribution from the Wolfboro Public Library Foundation, funds held by the Library Board of Trustees, and a small capital reserve account.
Article 10, Construction of Westwood Drive Subject to Betterment Assessment. And it reads as following. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $263,000 for the layout, design, and construction of Westwood Drive over existing private rights of ways as a town road conforming to current construction standards and requirements. Pursuant to RSA Chapter 231, Laying Out Highways, Section 28 through 33, this project will be subject to betterment assessments so that all the costs of the layout, design, and construction, including applicable interests, surveying costs, legal fees, and other incidental costs, will be assessed against property owners abutting or served thereby. Further, to authorize the issuance of $263,000 of bonds or notes for this project in accordance with RSA 33 Municipal Finance Act, and to further authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate the rate of interest, maturity, and other terms for this purpose. This project will not result in any increase in the tax rate as the people that it's benefiting, the residents on Westwood Drive, will be paying the town back for that money over the course of 10 years in their taxes. The estimated tax rate impact in 2018 is zero cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero and is recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of nine to zero. Requires a three-fifths majority vote. I will now hand this over to Mr. Ford to discuss more about the project.
Hello. My name is Dave Ford. I'm Director of Public Works, and I'm going to speak to this article. The problem is an older subdivision that had gone unmanaged for many years. The property owners came to the town and requested a layout of the road. We came up with a strategy to deal with this. The staff met with the representatives of the property owners. We reviewed the existing conditions of the road and made a list of the work required to bring it up to town standards. The owners followed up with an official petition to the selectmen, and the selectmen met with the property owners at a public hearing. The solution is to rebuild the road, which means to reclaim it, regrade it, add gravels where necessary, to do a base pavement and an overlay pavement, and to again replace all the drainage pipes that are corroded. The road itself is off of College Road. This is College Road, heading from 28 going out towards Brookfield. The Westwood Drive is a loop road that comes in and goes out, and that's this section we are looking at. You can see the majority of the house lots have been built on, and only the properties that are going to be front on this road or have access to it will receive the betterment charges for this work. A construction cost estimate was developed, looking at the worst-case scenarios with the town managing the property, and the total comes up to the $263,000. That does include contingencies. And it was specific that the 25 lot owners will pay for this on an annual fee over a 10-year period. The fee will also include the interest cost for the bond that will be raised if the article is approved. And with that, again, we are in support of helping these taxpayers and residents get the road to be brought up to a town standard, and hope you'll vote for this article. Thank you.
Article 11, Stormwater Collection System Asset Management Plan. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $30,000 for the purpose of developing an asset management program for the town's stormwater collection system that will qualify the town for federal and state funds. Such sums to be raised by the issuance of bonds and notes not to exceed $30,000 under and in compliance with the provisions of the Municipal Finance Act, RSA 33, as amended, and authorize the Board of Selectmen to issue and negotiate such bonds or notes to determine the rate of interest thereon, and to take such actions as may be necessary to effect the issuance, negotiation, sale, and delivery of such bonds or notes as shall be in the best interest of the town of Wolfboro. Additionally, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to apply for and accept grants or other funds that may reduce the amount to be repaid by $30,000, and participate in the State Revolving Fund, RSA 486.14, established for this purpose, and to allow the Board of Selectmen to expend such monies as become available from the federal and state governments and pass any necessary votes related thereto. This project will not result in any increase to the tax rate. The estimated tax impact for 2018 is zero. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of nine to zero. A three-fourths majority vote is required. The town has started to develop asset management plans for the town's facilities and infrastructure. An infrastructure asset management plan states the conditions of the component of the asset, and the significance of each component to the functioning of the asset, and a timeline to upgrade or replace. This year's warrant Article 11 is asking voters to support an asset management plan for the town's stormwater collection system, similar to the asset management plan approved last year for the town's wastewater collection system. I will turn it over to Dave Ford.
Thank you. My name is Dave Ford. I'm the Public Works Director for the town of Wolfboro. And the question could be asked, why am I showing you a picture of a bond? Because the town doesn't really have any bonds. But first, what I wanted to do is describe, sometimes they say a picture's worth 1,000 words. And if I showed you a picture of a new catch basin and an old catch basin, it probably wouldn't have the impact that hopefully this picture does. And what we can see here are 100-year-old structures, one that has not been taken care of and has taken the route of many we see. It just slowly, Mother Nature and Father Time is deteriorating it, and it's going to fall apart, and it's probably beyond Savior. The second picture is a bond that has been maintained and restored. And this is what we're trying to accomplish with our asset management plans. And as we can see with these two pictures, the second bond haven't been taken care of. Now, that farmer probably doesn't call it an asset management plan, and it's not something that we were using as a term. But it has come to my attention that that is what we're using now. And we have been talking about asset management plans for some time. And I want to do is give you a little history of where we're at. Back in 2015, we appropriated via warrant article $50,000 to begin our general asset management plan. In 2016, we continued that with another $25,000 appropriation. And then in 2016, on the water side, we obtained a $15,000 grant and $15,000 from our O&amp;M budget to work on the water system. In 2017, we actually received a $30,000 SRF loan/grant, which is similar to what we're asking for this year. So over the last three years, we did appropriate $135,000. Of that, $45,000 was either grant or forgiveness money. So we're doing well, and we're on track with our original plan, which was in 2015. It was a five-year plan, approximately $50,000 a year. And the intent was to inventory all our critical assets, to get an idea what the condition is, and then develop a long-term plan for the repair, replacement, and funding of that infrastructure. So back to where we are with warrant article number 11. So Article 11 is discussing Stormwater Collection System Asset Management Plan. This is one of our specific assets that we have not spent a lot of time mapping. And the state has found that they've had some money, and they are trying to encourage communities to go forward with these asset management plans, and thereby offering this state revolving fund money, which a loan forgiveness. Our problem is with our stormwater system. As we all know, we live near the lakes, but all our runoff from all our roads and parking lots drain to ditches and to wetlands, and ultimately into our lakes. And that's an important aspect, not only just because it is an asset, and if that drainage doesn't work, we have backups and problems, but also the lake is a critical natural resource to the town, and we need to preserve that. The need for treatment to mitigate the impacts of stormwater, and we do that with our catch basins, and each of the catch basins with sumps that collect standard debris. The conditions of our basins and pipes are really unknown. We have so many of them, we have probably over 800 catch basins and miles of stormwater pipes. We have no detailed plans, and we don't have a long-term plan. So our solution is to do this detailed inventory and assess each of the basins, the pipe between the basins, and the pipes going to our outlets. We also need to look at our stormwater treatment systems. As we said, we don't have many, but we do have a few. Recently, we've been working with the lake associations in developing best management practices and installing stormwater treatment systems. So part of this, we'll assess those and making sure we have a long-term plan. Once everything is inventoried, we will then decide where on the cycle the asset is. Can it be repaired and extended useful life? Or is it necessary to replace it and build or construct something addition? At the same time, we're going to be looking at the treatment systems, which will help us protect our lakes. The cost for this proposal is $30,000, and we have been working with our underwood engineers, and we have a proposal for that. And the funding will be provided. Again, if this warrant article passes, it'll be a bond vote in which we appropriate $30,000. And once the loan is approved, the contract will be completed this year. And at the end of the year, once we meet all the conditions, the loan is forgiven, thereby acting like a grant, and no cost to the taxpayers, out-of-pocket expenses because of that. Our schedule is to complete this by 2018, and again, to continue working on our asset management plan. We hope that you will support this important article and support other articles that are in support of our asset management plan. Thank you.
Article 12, This is the 2018 operating budget for the town of Wolfboro. And it reads as follows. Shall the town raise and appropriate as an operating budget, not including appropriations by special warrants and other appropriations devoted separately, the amount set forth on the budget posted with the warrant or as amended by the vote of the first session for the purpose set forth therein totaling $27,342,249. Should this article be defeated, the operating budget shall be $26,814,660, which is the same as last year's operating budget, with certain adjustments required by the previous action of the town or by law, or the governing body may hold one special meeting in accordance with RSA 40:13, 10, and 16 to take up the issue of a revised operating budget only. The estimated tax rate impact for 2018 is $5.04 per thousand of assessed valuation. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of seven to one. Majority vote is required. And how this will affect the taxpayers in Wolfboro is as follows. If you own a home that's worth $100,000, the additional tax for this year would be $25. A $200,000 home would be assessed additional tax of $50, and a $300,000 home would subsequently be assessed a tax of $75. And that would be the effect. We spent a lot of time, the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee, in bringing the town a budget that is thoughtful and brings some important issues that we need to continue working on in town, but at the same time, keeping our tax rate as low as possible.
We're introducing Article 13, Town Road Upgrades. And it reads as follows. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $870,000 for the purpose of upgrading town roads and drainage systems. The estimated tax rate impact for 2018 is 43.9 cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of five to four. Majority vote is required. The town of Wolfboro has about 53 miles of paved roads and about 14 miles of gravel roads. The road system in Wolfboro is the one asset that every resident and visitor to town will use every day. It is also the most visible asset of the town. The Public Works Department has created a long-term plan to address the maintenance and reconstruction of all of the town roads. I urge the voters to support this article, and I'll now turn it over to our Public Works Director, Dave Ford, for further details.
Thank you. My name is Dave Ford, and Director of Public Works for the town of Wolfboro. This road warrant article is probably the one that's most favored by our voters over the past years. While we do have over 67 miles of road, many of them are still in poor condition. The reasons are because they were originally paths that just developed into roads and were never really engineered. Many of them have inadequate base to the roads and inadequate drainage. And as over time, you know, traffic has increased, and the effects of our climate have gone up and down to beat up our roads. So we know we have the problem, and the solution has been an annual road upgrade. This work involves doing culvert replacements for existing drains, and also adding additional drainage in, and catch basins and sumps, and stormwater treatment systems where applicable. Sometimes roads can be overlaid if in that too bad a shape. Other times, they need to be reclaimed. That means we get in there with a big machine and grind up the old pavement and mix it with the underling, and then we put out a base and wear-in cost. So the cost to rebuild these roads is becoming more per linear foot as we do more, but the good news is these roads last longer, and they'll be able to put up with the elements. And it go on to say drainage is a critical and a most important aspect of this work. We know when the water comes, we have to get rid of it. We have to have systems to get rid of it. And now we have to have systems to treat it to make sure that we're protecting our natural resources. In 2018, the roads we're looking at rebuilding would be Quaiden Road, which is off of North Main Street. We're looking at College Road, which is off Route 28, and Trot and Track Road, which is also off Route 28. These roads, all in needs, have been patched up and are needing to be totally rebuilt with reclaim, drainage improvements, and major pavement work. We also have some smaller roads this year. Martin Hill Road, which is probably the road, it's the worst road in town. It's the shortest, and it only accesses a few residents. However, it's on a hill, and it's at a point now, if we don't do something soon, we will not be able to plow it, because the drainage is falling apart and the road's falling apart. That is a short section. And then another important road this year is Railroad Avenue Extension. That is, again, from the downtown area as you head out by the railroad building and then the Back Bay Boat Launch. The road turns to gravel. There's a gravel section there, and then it's the old railroad house freight building. And there's a section there that has not been paved, and that's for specific reasons. But the town has acquired the real estate and rights of way now to lay out a town road, and that'll allow us to not only pave the road, but put in appropriate drainage. And this project will work with the future of the railroad freight storage building. And the last thing on the list, we do have some engineering. We are doing a two-phase work on our road surface management system, which is really an asset management system, in which case this year, all the roads were inventoried and a condition assessment done. And now we're developing the long-term strategy and a long-term funding plan. So hopefully, after this year, we'll go from a year-to-year crisis management to hopefully next year, having a long-term plan, laying out which roads and what treatments they're going to have, and then hopefully securing the funding for that. But again, this year, the appropriation's for $870,000, and we appreciate the voter support in this important article. Thank you.
Lynda Murray, and I'm going to do Article 14, Reconstruction of the 390 Line. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $1,210,000 from the Electric Enterprise Fund for the purpose of reconstruction of the 390 line, which feeds the town's electric power supply from Tuftonboro to Wolfboro. Such expenditure will not result in any increase in the tax rate or electric rate. Estimated tax impact 2018 is zero per thousand of assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee, nine to zero. And a majority vote is required. This warrant article is addressing the town's main power line from Tuftonboro. The town's 390 line is 54 years old and in need of replacement. I want to emphasize that the cost to replace the 390 line is already calculated in the town's electric rate, so this warrant article will not have any impact to the current electric rates or tax rate. And now I'd like to turn it over to Barry Mugiel.
Thank you, Lynda. The 390 line is our sole source of power to the town of Wolfboro. As it exists now, it is the original line. It was built in the early '60s. And at this point, based on its condition and age, there has been some reliability problems with crossarms, insulators, et cetera. Again, this is our sole lifeline. We don't have an alternative source. Some of the other issues we have with the line is the ground default clearance, is some of the thermal ratings. During the heat, the lines actually sag a bit and do not meet today's current standards. If you recall, in 2017, we did a warrant article to provide pre-engineering as well as survey work. That has been completed, and the concept of that was, or the idea was, to get a better budget number for the project and a better scope. So the detail of the project is, originally, initially, we would go through, reestablished the right-of-way width with some trimming. We would have to address all the wetlands issues, which there are numerous wetlands in the city. in the area. We'd have to put up silt fencing throughout as well as lay down timber framing on some of those sensitive areas to allow equipment in. All poles would be replaced. We would go 10 feet taller with poles. If you look in this photo right here, this is an example of the older style construction on the right with the newer style construction on the left, approximately 10 feet further in height up. That also gets us away from some of the tree fall factors that can happen out on that right-of-way. As well, we would replace all conductors, insulators and crossarms. After the poles were up and the new line installed, we'd also have to transfer some of the underbuilt distribution that is on that line for a section that feeds up to the tower. That would be this lower circuit you see here. As well, we would install a switch at the Wolfboro-Tuftonboro line, which is where our ownership starts. The concept of adding that switch is we would no longer be at the beck and call of Eversource when we needed to open up that line to work on it and make repairs. Currently, if we have a problem on our end, if a tree falls down on our end, we have to wait for the Eversource linemen to go out and physically open the switch up in Tuftonboro. Sometimes that wait can be three or four hours just to get them out there. If we add a switch at this location, it's up at the RIB site, we will have full control of that. We can open the switch ourselves and then immediately respond to make repairs. Again, this project has no effect on the tax rate. It is built into the current electric rate, which we enjoy today. And I appreciate your support on this project. Thank you.
Hey. Article 15, Repair of Existing Dockside Docks. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $90,000, purposes of one, making immediate repairs to the existing town docks, and two, engineering and permitting required repairs to the existing dock system and retaining walls as per the town docks asset management study performed by Ticken Bond Engineers. Estimated tax rate impact for 2018, .045 per thousand. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee, nine to zero. Majority vote is required. I will turn this over to David Ford for further explanation.
Thank you. My name is Dave Ford. I'm the Director of Public Works for the town of Wolfboro and I'm here to discuss the warrant Article 15 for the repair of the existing dockside docks. And first, what I'd like to do is just show you an overview. When we say dockside docks, we want to make sure everyone understands that the docking system includes, while our residential docks, which everyone is familiar with, all the finger docks, our commercial docks where we have the big Mount Washington comes in and we have some smaller box in, a mailboat dock, but also includes the lock crib walls extending from the bridge all the way along Smith River out to the moorings where we have the Mount Washington on. These are referred to dolphins, the west dolphin and the south dolphin. Those are clusters of pilings. And so when we talk about the structure, it's not only just the docks, it's also the crib walls or the sea walls and also along here, which we call the central wall and the east wall. Those are all concrete walls and we're talking about the complete system. Now, what is the problem? Well, as everything, the problem is aging docks in the system. We've, it's been constructed over many years and it has heavy use. Again, not only the Mount Washington docks, as we talked about, the sea wall, the bulkheads, but the finger docks in the get heavily used during the summer times. The use is by not only by people who live here, but our summer residents who come in and islands and many visitors who come to visit our fine town. The other problem is just Mother Nature and Father Time. It's amazing how that can wear out and especially with our winters here. The winter ice could be very damaging and has taken its toll. So our solution was we did hire some experts. Tyon Bond had a team specifically trained and experienced in working underwater on docks and bulkhead systems. That report was completed by Tyon Bond this fall. In that report, they identified many deficiencies within our system and they made a list of emergency repairs that had to be made right away. And part of this article is to fund those emergency repairs. A lot of them deal with crossbracing of the docks that have been damaged underneath the docks. Also, they identified the other long-term needs and again, while this was an asset management plan, we do need to now develop the repair and upgrade strategy. So part of the project is to develop a long-term repair and upgrade strategy. We need to engineer the major repairs, so we need to make sure that we can tell a contractor how to do it and how to make sure the upgrades meet code. We also have to get specific permits from the Hampshire Department of Environmental Services to make sure everything is done in accordance with the rules and regulations and to protect the environment. And then we need to develop a schedule and develop funding and to figure out where in the future we would do that. Here is a kind of a few pictures talking about some of the problems. This is the dolphin, we talked about the west dolphin where the Mount Washington ties up. You can see many of these have been broken or in disrepair. You can see a pile cap here, which has been shifted due to the ice. Another one here, you can see a crossbrake in that is snapped and more likely due to ice. And then here, you can see the concrete sea wall and where it's been frost heaved and broken up and in disrepair. Clearly, the, something needs to be done and, where's my next picture? Additional pictures again showing the crib wall going back to the bridge. We can showing some of the movement of the concrete versus the timber and then again, some more concrete deterioration just over time where we've seen these problems. The report, the time report is very detailed. The intent here is not to show you the specifics, but just to show you that every specific was looked at and a condition was given and then a kind of an idea of when it should be repaired or replaced. So this year, what we're talking about doing under this warrant article is to develop, we have a construction budget of $40,000 and that is to make all emergency repairs based on the Tyon Bond report to make sure those are all done so that we can open up the docks this summer without having any problems. The intent is this warrant article gets approved, as soon as the ice melts, we'll be in there and all those repairs will be done in the spring. The second part, and is important, is to develop the long-term plans, the engineered plans, so that we can make sure that when the time comes, they can be properly fixed and repaired and to get the permits as necessary to do all this work and then to develop a long-term plan and also to see how we could stage this. So we may not have to do it all in one year, but we want to make sure that if we do something in one year, it doesn't get impacted by something that has to get done a later years. We just want to make sure that the projects are coordinated and that the schedules would be, would be done in such a way as not, we're not wasting any money. And then again, once we fully understand all the repairs and the costs, then we can develop the long-term funding plan. Again, we are very hopeful that the voters will support this important article and that we can get this work done next year. Thank you.
Article 16, Dockside Docks Expansion. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $25,000 for the purposes of designing and permitting the expansion of the dockside docks. Estimated tax rate impact in 2018, .013 per thousand. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee, five to three. Turn this over to David Ford. He will explain and show you some pictures of the project.
Thank you. I'm Dave Ford. I'm the Director of Public Works and I'll be speaking to this warrant article. We have a picture up here showing the dockside area and it's not as easy to see from this aerial photography, but these are the existing docks here in the lighter color and the darker color are the expansion of the docks. Also here, it's hard to say, but the orientation of the Mount Washington is at this angle and then with the future proposal, it would be shifted to this to allow more access for boaters in and out. That's the configuration. This is another diagram kind of showing those configurations. This all is conceptual in nature. What is the problem? The problem is boaters trying to visit Wolfboro. If anyone's been out there in a nice, beautiful summer evening or summer day, you see many boats hovering around looking for a space somewhere to be able to dock to allow the people to get in to walk around. Our existing docks can accommodate approximately 56 boats, assuming 25 feet per boat and that everyone is organized and parked in appropriately. Well, in reality, that's not how it works. We have many size boats and we have many types of drivers and unfortunately, this is a theoretical number. We have to use it based on something. During peak times, many of the boats sit around idling waiting to get onto docks. There becomes frustration when there's no slips available and the people who could be enjoying a nice walk downtown or buying dinner are sometimes sent home without even stepping foot in Wolfboro. And that's a real problem. It's a problem for the businesses and it's a problem for a community that says it's the oldest resort in America, in the jewel of Wunnapasaki. It's lost economic development opportunity and I think this is why the Selectmen are looking towards this and subcommittees developed by the Selectmen are looking for it. We have another issue which needs to also be addressed. Two years ago, Mount Washington was bottoming out during low lake level and part of the, this would also have to be looking towards the future in dredging of that area. So what is the solution? Like you said, the Board of Selectmen did form a town docks committee, getting local businesses and stakeholders involved to discuss the area. That committee actually went around the lake, looked at different communities and what other communities had to offer. They studied our problems and needs. They also reached out to the Hampshire DES and tried to find out, because there was this perception that, oh, we have as many docks as you can get or the rules would not allow the docks to be expanded. But the committee took the initiative, set up meetings with the state and found out that no, we could expand it, that if it was, if it's in the best interests of the community and that was easily could be proved, that the state would go forward with this. However, we do need to do the appropriate engineering and permitting. So the committee went out and developed the concept plan and that's the plan we just saw back here, which would give us some extension of each of the docks. Some of the docks could not be extended. Like here, we're already close to our property line, it couldn't be extended and here couldn't be expanded because of the proximity to the Mount Washington. And what we looked at theoretically, again, our existing linear footage is 760 feet, which would give us an estimated 56 boat slips, assuming 25 foot and everyone parked perfectly. What we'd be looking at potentially, a conceptual of 330 linear feet and which would then provide us with 30 different additional spaces, assuming the 25-foot, and that's 330 linear feet, so we have, that's double the amount of extension because you'd have parking on either side. So that would be a significant upgrade and it would go a long ways to solving the identified problem of getting people to visit our beautiful community. So following it up, we have a contract with the engineer to do the design expansion and to develop plans for permitting the docks and dredging. So what we're looking for in this warrant article is to develop these detailed plans, engineering, so that they could go out to bid and we'd have good solid numbers and also to get the permitting done also. And clearly, this project would have to be coordinated with the repair, dock repair warrant article and that's one of the reasons that we felt it would be good to do them both at the same time, but because they're different subjects, they are different warrant articles. One other thing that's kind of important to note, that once we develop these plans and have a better idea of what we can get permitted, we can then apply for grants. And there is a federal grant out there that is pretty significant for boating infrastructure similar to this. And this is the type of things that we could look at, once we get this approved and get the plans and then we can figure out if we would qualify or could we get some significant grants. There are other ways to fund this. One is setting up a cap reserve fund to put a limit each year or we could bond the project going forward. And there are other potential ideas that could be looked at. In any case, the first step is to actually approve this and hopefully we can go forward with the design concepts, the permitting, and that'll allow us to go forward with this important project. We thank you for your consideration.
Article 17, Dockside Public Restroom Improvement. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $150,000 to reconstruct and expand the public restrooms at the Dockside Restaurant Facility to provide year-round and ADA accessible public restrooms at the Dockside Facility. The estimated tax rate impact 2018 is 7.6 cents per thousand of assessed valuation. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee, eight to zero. Majority vote required. In 2015, the Economic Development Committee performed a business retention and expansion survey of 93 businesses. One of the three most important community factors to be improved was public restrooms. The Board of Selectmen established an ad hoc restroom committee, which recommended a phased approach to increasing and upgrading the restrooms in town. The first project was a false field building with three additional restrooms that is under construction now. This year's warrant article addresses the need to upgrade and expand the restrooms at Dockside Restaurant Facility. The town's dockside area is used heavily by our summer, our summer residents and tourists. And I'd like to turn this over to Dave Ford.
Thank you. My name is Dave Ford. I'm the Director of Public Works and I'm here to speak to you about Article 17, which is to Dockside Public Restrooms Improvements. Here we have a photograph of our beautiful iconic building and we're looking at the backside, which is where we have our walk-up ice cream. And then here is one of our unisex bathrooms in the back. The other one is around this corner. What we're proposing to do here is to upgrade this building. The problem is pretty clear. The dockside in downtown attracts many visitors and they come by car, by boat, by bus. And we just do not have enough restroom facilities for these people. We do add porta-johns, but it's really a sad way to welcome someone to a community. Usually after a long drive, you need to rest and a porta-john is not the comfortable place to go. I think the Selectmen have been strong supporters of looking at what we need to do here. The other problem with the existing facility here, it is only seasonal, does not have any heat. The existing restrooms are basically one-seater, so we only have two seats. And the, because of the heavy use, the existing facility is worn out. In 2010, we did upgrades for ADA accessibility, but within that eight years, these facilities are worn out and we'd be looking at at least upgrading what we had as a minimum in the next couple of years. What was the solution? Well, the Board of Selectmen formed a public restrooms committee and again, was able to pull together business owners, interested stakeholders to discuss the problem and look to see what our options were and not only look at this area, but look at all the areas and to look at different alternatives. And we did come up with many alternatives to the solution. What we came up with is the design to use the existing footprint of the building. So what we see here, this footprint is the existing footprint and it would have a common entrance here, which would come into the women's room. We'd have one, two, three stalls for the women with an ADA accessible sink and there'd be a baby changing station here. On the men's side, we would also have, there'd be two ADA accessible stalls, a sink and a urinal and a baby changing station. Outside, we'd have a water closet for the janitor and supplies and this is where our water meter would be coming in. And this is right here would be where the ice cream, this is facing out to Smith River. We would have some storage of the propane gas tanks would be just off the screen there. And again, as we just stated, the solution would be to triple the size of the bathrooms by having three water closets in the women's room, two water closets plus a urinal in the men's room. And again, all the facilities would be ADA accessible. Again, looking at a view of the building, it would match the existing, this is the existing, where we have our gas tanks are hidden here. That's the side entrance to the restaurant and this is kind of the platform where you walk into the existing bathroom. The proposed would be off to this side here, we, in this area here, this would be covered with some doors here. In this area here, this would be covered with some doors here and this is where the propane tanks would be. This would all be a wall that would mimic what we have there now, a nice white clapboard. And the entrance would be here, going left to the women's room to right to the men's room. Here are just some sections detailing how we would construct it. We would take special consideration. The seawall is here. We are concerned about the seawall. We would be doing special foundation work to make sure it meets cold, but also protects the wall there. Again, the building would be insulated so that it could be open for winter activities such as last night and other events that may occur off-season. Again, we see this as a huge improvement to the area. We have worked with our consultant, Bergeron Technical Services, in developing a design. The town would act as a general contractor. We are currently seeking bids for the subcontracted work for plumbing and electrical work. We've estimated the construction cost with contingencies to be $150,000 and that is what we're proposing in warrant article B. Schedule, if this is approved in March, our hope is to start as soon as Mother Nature will let us and the frost comes out and we can get in there. And our hope would be that these additional restrooms would be available for the summer of 2018. Again, we think this project is very important and we appreciate voter support. Thank you.
Article 18, Effluent Disposal Study. See if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $500,000 for the purpose of designing and permitting a long-term effluent disposal solution and to make required site work upgrades in accordance with NHDES and the town's administrative order by consent. And also to acquire an approximately five-acre parcel of land in Tufton Borough adjacent to the town's Rapid Infiltration Basin site for the purpose of completing required improvements. Said $500,000 shall be transferred from the Sewer Enterprise Fund. Such expenditures will not increase any increase in the tax rate. Estimated tax rate impact 2018 is zero. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0 and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. Majority vote is required. This warrant article is for designing and permitting a final solution and performing required improvements to the RIB site in accordance with NHDES and the town's administrative order. The funding for this project will come from the funds the town was awarded at the lawsuit and will not result in any increase in the tax rate at all. I urge the voters to support this article and I'll now turn it over to Dave Ford for further details.
Thank you. My name is David Ford. I'm the Director of Public Works for the town of Wolfboro. And speaking to Article 18, the Effluent Disposal Study. A lot of times, we use acronyms and kind of forget what they mean, but we talk about the RIB site, and that is the Rapid Infiltration Basin site. What we have up here is that site. And this is the top of the hill, basins 1, 2, and 3 on the west side and basins 4 and 5 on the east side. This is bisected by the power line, which comes from Tufton Borough above the screen, going towards Wolfboro to the south of the screen. This has been the subject of much discussion and tonight, I'm not going to go back into a lot of the details, except to say that the original problem of effluent disposal is a significant one. The town of Wolfboro does not live along a nice big river like the Merrimack River. We are constricted by the fact that all our wastewater, treated wastewater, has to get into the ground. Thereby, our discharge permit is a groundwater discharge permit. We have done many studies and thought back in 2007 that the RIB site was going to be our long-term solution. We invested in it, we permitted it and got it built, and then it broke. Following those problems, we did get into a lawsuit with our consultant and we did win. And as a result, we also sat down with the Department of Environmental Services and developed an administrative order by consent. And that, in that, it was something that we worked with the state and said, okay, now we have the problem behind us. We're looking forward, how do we best solve this long-term problem? That administrative order laid out very specific items that had to get done over the last couple of years. And it was to look at all the different possibilities to getting rid of our effluent and also looking at how do we reduce infiltration into our sewer system. And they tied the two together because it only makes sense. If clean water gets into the sewer system and then we have to treat it and dispose of it, it would make sense, let's not even let it get in. So that made a lot of sense and we agreed. So we negotiated the AOC, we've studied the alternatives, and we've done a detailed pilot test of one of the most important options. To date, all nine of the specific actions required by the AOC have been met and completed and were all submitted on time. In 2017, the Engineered Natural Solution Pilot Study was successful. This is, we were able to prove that we can get the breakout water back into the brook and we believe we can do that in accordance with state rules and regulations. And that report was issued to the state at the end of December. We are waiting to hear back from them with the official comments, but we're very confident that what we have presented so far is going in the right direction. Now, this is a map showing the overall site and at the top would be our, RIB is a Rapid Infiltration Basin, so that would be RIB 3 just on the top of the picture. And then along this border is 19 Mile Brook, ultimately where the water's going to end up. This would be our western side and this is our central and this is the eastern side. Biggest problems have occurred in these two drainage areas in the central and the west. And again, what we proved this summer was that we can collect the water, which is break it out and get it into the brook. What we did not prove was can we collect the water above and have the impact of a groundwater trench taking the water so that it reduces the pressure off the lower areas of the drainage watershed and thus stop the problems. So with the engineers, originally we're proposing was a solution which we do trial and error and spend a lot of money. And I said, well, let's wait. We wait now, we are still doing a good job with our treatment. There are no negative impacts as a result of the issues we're having right now. So in 2018, we're proposing to do a pilot test up in the upper reaches, in which it would be a groundwater interceptor trench, to show that this technology will in fact give us the results we are looking for. So that's a big change to it. And so what we're proposing again would be a full-scale pilot study of the interceptor cutoff trench. At the same time, we do know what we have to do in terms of designing and permitting the wetlands restoration. So many of the wetlands on the site have been impacted because of the failure of the RIBs and we do need to get that corrected. And then, as we get this done early part of the year, by the end of the year, based on the data from the pilot test, we would then develop the construction drawings and then develop a long-term phased approach to installing that. One of the things I want to do too is to tell you where the money is coming from, funding for this project. The net proceeds from the lawsuit, after paying all the legal fees, was $5.3 million. In 2015, we started off with a $700,000 appropriation to begin this study and to look at all the different alternatives with regards to the disposal system and our collection system. In 2017, we requested another $500,000 to complete the studies and to begin the pilot studies, which were done last year. In the interim, based on good investments from our treasurer, we were able to grow that money by $100,000. So our net position right now is we still have approximately $4.2 million in the bank. In 2018, what we're proposing to do is to spend $500,000. And under this scenario, we'd be looking at $300,000 would be for the design and permitting of the upgrades and the wetlands restoration. Approximately $150,000 would be for doing some stabilization of wetlands and restoration, but a lot of that would go into the pilot study for the interceptor trench work. And then we have some additional money to do, continuing doing detailed studies on contaminants in the environment. That would add to about $500,000. The other aspect that's on, we're looking for authorization, is for land negotiations. And if we go back to this picture here, the town line runs approximately in this direction. So some of the areas that were damaged, we're down in this area here, we are responsible for and we are working with the adjoining property owner to purchase that. Right now, we're in negotiations and those negotiations hopefully will be completed shortly. But hopefully, in the area that we're, we'll have, nothing's budgeted for there yet, but our hope is that that'll be reasonable and that we will fit within our monies we have available. Going forward, again, we would be looking at a total cost for the RIB being the $3.7 million going forward on their sewer rehab. We have $50,000 for engineering this year and out years. We're looking at construction dollars. Still provides us with a contingency of $100,000 and a balance of $100,000 in the fund. This project again, seems like it's been going on for a long time and it has been and it will go on forever. This has become our very important, without a sewer system, we wouldn't be Wolfboro. What allows us to have the dense urban area in our downtown area, to have our schools, municipal building and many restaurants, is because we have a sewer system. Our treatment plant is one of the best in the state. In 2016, it won an award for being the best plant. What we need to do is again, develop this long-term effluent disposal solution that we all can feel comfortable that this problem will be behind us and our future will be bright. Again, we support, we would thank you in advance for your support of this important article. Thank you.
Article 19, Sewer Rehabilitation. To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 from the Sewer Enterprise Fund for the purpose of designing and permitting upgrades to the sewer collection system to reduce infiltration. The activities will be paid for from a legal settlement and will not result in any increase in the tax rate. Estimated tax rate impact for 2018 is 0 cents per thousand of assessed value. It's recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0 and by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0. Majority vote required. I'll now hand it over to Dave Ford, Director of Public Works.
Thank you. My name is Dave Ford, Director of Public Works, here to speak to you. Article 19 about Sewer Rehabilitation. Our problem has been, this sewer system was originally constructed in the 1940s and expanded in the 50s and 60s. The system is a miles of pipe that's in the ground and we are receiving excess groundwater through infiltration. And infiltration gets in through the sewer manholes, through cracks in sewer pipes, and through private sources where people have their individual service lines or if they have a sub-pump tied to our system. The problems with this, this can create sewer overflows. It costs money for us to collect this and pump it. We have multiple pump stations within the collection system and then we have a big pump station that pumps it all to the treatment plant. And within the treatment plant, we have to pump it multiple times before it gets out to our effluent disposal facility. And there is where we have a bigger problem because we are limited on how much water we can get back in the ground. So clearly, it makes sense to mitigate this. Here's another diagram showing you where the infiltration can come from. And this is a standard collection system. Where out in the street, we have our sewer mains and sewer manholes. Here would be a residential house with a sewer service leading to it. Infiltration can get in through cracks in the system, whether roots get in and open up and the groundwater gets in, or whether it's cracks underneath the road. What we need to do and what we have been doing is trying to figure out where the problems are and trying to eliminate them. So since 2006, we had a warrant article for $612,000. We had some specific main line replacements and slip line that was done. In 2008, we followed up with another $820,000, looking at again, some specific repairs and additional studies. In 2013, we had $400,000 for upgrades and some of that money just finished being spent is on Senate Street because we also coordinated with other projects. So if you were doing a water project, in this case, we're doing a road project on Senate Street, we had money available to do the sewer repairs at that point. In 2015, as part of our administrative order, they required us to do additional studies and work on the sewer system so that we could identify the problems and find out cost-effective solutions. In 2018, what we're looking at is developing $50,000 to develop specific plans to, so we could go after the most cost-effective sewer infiltration reduction projects. I threw up a chart here just to show that we are making progress. Back in 2006, we had 156 million gallons of sewer, treated effluent to get rid of. Now, that number is definitely tied to how much rain, because the more rain we have, the more infiltration we have. But over the years, spending the money we have just shown, we have gone down. And last year, we had our lowest year with 40 inches of rain, we were down to 87 million gallons of treated effluent. So that's a great reduction. This year, we slipped back up mainly because it was wet. We had over 25% increase in rain from 40 inches to 50 inches and the flow did increase back up to 106 million gallons, but still much less than it was for less flows in previous years. So I think that's a good sign pointing to the effectiveness of the INI program. The one problem though, which is kind of curious too, I looked, pointed this one specifically. We had done some emergency repairs in Dockside. We may have put a Band-Aid, that worked for a little while, but that let go. And I think in 2017, a lot of this was from the Dockside. That Dockside did a permanent repair, was done in the fall, so I'm very hopeful that we'll see these numbers return, even if we have a high rainfall next year. Again, with our old system, we do need to continually be after these old pipes. We did complete our asset management plan for the sewer collection system and our pump stations and we are developing a long-term plan for repair replacement, as well as funding of those. This is the next logical step and again, we appreciate the town's support in this important article. Thank you.
Dave Bauer is here for Article 20, Replacing the Water Treatment Control Panels. The article reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $175,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund for the purpose of upgrading control panels and computers of the water treatment plant. These activities will not result in any increase in the tax rate." As stated, no increase in the tax rate. Voted 100% by the Board of Selectmen and also unanimously by the Budget Committee. I hope that you will vote for this improvement. It will save everybody and David Ford will give details.
Thank you. My name is David Ford. I'm the Director of Public Works and I'm here to speak to Article 20, Replacement of Water Treatment Control Panels. What is the problem? Well, our water treatment plant is 21 years old and as town buildings go, it's really in its infancy. It's just a little baby. And part of the, and I'd invite anyone to go up there, the building is beautiful, we've done a really good job of taking care of it and you would never know it's 21 years old. However, there are pots of it that are showing its age. In the past years, we've done an asset management plan, which identified all the important aspects of the plant and determined where the useful life is and how much longer we had. Unfortunately, one of the major things was our control panels. While structures can last 100 years and pipes can last 150 years, our computers do not have that kind of life cycle. Internal pots we have are still running, but replacement pots are no longer made and we can't find them. So we're getting at a point where we're very worried that if something were to break, it could be a considerable problem. Right now, our plant is only manned eight hours a day because of our automation. If our automation went down, if we lost a PLC or one of these control panels, we would have to then man the plant 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and that would be a significant burden. This is just a photograph showing you, this is our main control panel, showing the internal PLCs, and that's what we're looking at. Each one of these PLCs is helping control or monitor one of the pots of the plant. These are our sub panels. Again, each of the subsystems has an electric unit and then a SCATER control unit, which helps again, collect the data and helps the operators make decisions. So the solution is pretty clear-cut. We've worked with an engineer and we're detailing the required upgrades. We are working with our operators and our SCATER integrator, and the SCATER being a supervisory control and data acquisition system, and that's what this is all about. And then, we're proposing to do a design-build with our partners. In this situation here, we feel, we know specifically what we need. We have professionals who've worked with us over the years and we feel we can save a significant amount of money as acting as a general contractor in doing a design-build upgrade. The estimate is at $175,000 and this money is coming from the water fund's unrestricted fund balance and is part of our long-term plan. Again, we hope that you will support this very important project for us. Thank you.
Article 21, Pine Street Water Line Replacement. Reads as follows. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $260,000 from the Water Enterprise Fund for the purpose of replacing the existing water line in Pine Street. These activities will not result in any increase in the tax rate. Estimated tax rate impact for 2018 is zero. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of 5 to 0, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of 8 to 0, and a majority vote is required." This project is necessary to replace about This project is necessary to replace about 820 feet of four-inch cast iron pipe that was installed back in the 1890s. This project will also be coordinated along with the Senate Street reconstruction project. There'll be no increase in the tax rate as I just stated there and I urge the voters to support this article. I'll now turn it over to Dave Ford for further details.
Thank you. My name is David Ford, Director of Public Works for the Town of Wolfboro. I'm here to speak to Article 21. Pine Street Water Line Replacement. This is a very important project and one of the ones people don't realize because it's out of sight, out of mind. But our original water system was installed back in the 1890s thanks to our forefathers who had great guts and determination to do what they did. They'd laid many miles of pipe from upper Beach Pond all the way to the downtown area. And that water system has been servicing the public for over 130 years. This section, and many sections of the old system have been replaced, but we still have parts of the old system around. Pine Street has been identified as a project that has problems. We have this four-inch line that doesn't get a lot of use and because of that, the line has tuberculated, which means it has some interior buildup of iron bacteria. And what that results in is when we have a high water or if we have flushing activities or if something disturbs the system, the residents and businesses along that stretch get dirty water. And I do find out about that because my good barber, Gary, he always tells me about the dirty water. He has my phone number, so I frequently get calls when there are problems. Our asset management plan, which was done in detail, has identified this one as one of the most important pieces to get replaced. And again, it was on schedule to be done sooner, but it had to get put off because of the work on Senate Street. The Senate Street project is delayed for different reasons. It is now under construction and will be completed this spring and summer and fall. The hope is that this project will be coordinated and take off right after that. We have the design done of the eight-inch. We are going to upgrade from four-inch to eight-inch. Again, it will be coordinated and our tentative schedule, if everything goes well, would be to complete it in the fall of 2018. The estimate for the water main replacement, which does include engineering and contingencies, is $260,000 and the funding would come from the unrestricted fund balance. Again, this is a very important project for the water system and we appreciate the town's vote on this. Thank you.
Warren Article 22 Bay Street Sidewalk. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $45,000 for the purpose of designing and permitting a sidewalk along Bay Street. Estimated tax rate impact 2018 is 2.3 cents per thousand of assessed value. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. Not recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of five to three. A majority vote is required." Since the 1980s, the Town of Wolfboro has been talking about how to connect the center of downtown with the businesses on Mill, Varney Road and Bay Street. Around 1980, the Russell Chase Bridge Falls Path along Back Bay was created. Wolfboro's Planning Board and Board of Selectmen started moving the town in the direction of a walkable community. The 2007 master plan, Greater Downtown Chapter, Objective Three, Make the Downtown More User-Friendly. One of the planned actions was to, and I quote, "expand and maintain the network of sidewalks, for example, along Bay Street." Around 2007, the town replaced the covered slash bridge on Bay Street with a bridge wide enough for a sidewalk. This Warren article is seeking funds to design and permit a sidewalk on Bay Street to address the need of a safe pedestrian walkway to the center of downtown. I would ask you to vote in favor of this Warren article and I will turn it over to Dave Ford for more details.
Thank you. My name is Dave Ford, Director of Public Works and I'm here to speak to Article 22. Bay Street Sidewalk. First, I'd like to just kind of highlight where we're talking about. Bay Street connects Elm Street, which is here, 109A or Elm Street. Bay Street continues all the way down, goes by King Street, which loops there and crosses the bridge here that was upgraded a few years ago and then connects at a three-way stop sign with Mill Street, Varney Street and then Bay Street. So what we're looking at doing is doing a survey and design of a sidewalk which would extend all the way up Bay Street. Also note, we have the Front Bay Park, which is this parcel here and here, which is becoming very popular. We have the Taylor Community here, which is a nice retirement home and many of these people like to walk. What this does create is pedestrian safety. That's a significant problem. While we've been in touch with the police and the police did their best to monitor the speeds and try to slow people down, Bay Street is a very nice road, a cut-through road and it is becoming a safety issue. Many people do use Bay Street to walk because they can loop and go around the bay connecting with Elm Street and the Bridge Falls pathway. We have many residents. We have again, the Front Bay Park. We have businesses. We have the Taylor Home and we also have the Boat Museum, which is coming not too far in the future. The other problem is we have right-of-way issues. It's a little bit of a narrow right-of-way. Most of our right-of-ways are 50 feet. This one is only 40 feet. And then we have utility poles, which tend to go on both sides of the road, which makes it difficult, as well as other obstructions, whether structures from buildings themselves. So it's quite a unique problem we have there. And the solution is pretty simple. We need to do a survey. We need to survey the right-of-way and all the property from the front to the homes in and we need to prepare a base plan and to look at sidewalk alternatives and really to reach out to the stakeholders of the people who want to use a sidewalk and to the many residents and business owners in the property to see how we can work together to make this happen. The, you know, it's easy sometimes to talk about making Wolfboro pedestrian-friendly. It's hard to do the right thing. This is the hard thing. Again, what we're talking about now is just step one in the process. Figuring out exactly where we could put the sidewalk and that's where the survey comes in very important. Engineering, the aspects of it, how do we make this safe? How do we respect property rights and how do we do it economically? These are all important first steps before we can get to the final. This year, again, what we're asking for is $45,000. My breakout is that with the engineering and the survey costs, there, 25,000 for engineering, survey for 20, that is the small amount. The big amount would actually be in the construction costs and at this point, we're looking at just under half a million dollars. However, that could be defrayed by potentially getting grants. There are transportation grants that could happen. We've also have a very strong pathways committee and they've been successful in raising funds. So I think what we ought to do now is focus on just determining what needs to be done and then, once we understand what needs to be done, then we can worry about the funding down the future. I know the Budget Committee was somewhat concerned about that, but I think the majority of our people are in favor of having pedestrian safety, in support of these type of infrastructure improvements. And again, we hope that you'll think about this and support our project when it comes time to vote. Thank you.
Article 23 Dockside Docks Capital Reserve Fund. "See if the town will vote to establish a dockside docks capital reserve fund for the purpose of repairing and improving the dockside docks facilities and further to raise and appropriate the sum of $100,000 to be deposited in said capital reserve fund being under the custody of the trustees of trust funds. Selectmen are designated as agents to expend the funds in this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact 2018, .050 per thousand. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero. It's recommended by the Budget Committee on a vote of six to two. Majority vote required." I'll turn this over to David Ford for explanation.
Thank you. My name is David Ford and I'm the Director of Public Works and I'm here to speak to Article 23. Dockside Docks Capital Reserve Fund. Well, the problem, we have talked about this in our earlier Article 15 in which we did a dock study, an asset management plan looking at all the needs. The asset management plan identified many deficiencies as well as doing a complete assessment of the complete structure. Identified many repairs, some of them emergencies and some of those are already in the funding for Article 15. But also, there are many repairs that can be put off because we still have useful life and there's also the potential for looking at different aspects of handling those requirements. At this point, the other repairs are estimated at $420,000. Without a specific, those can have to occur with anywhere from three to 15 years. So Article 15 is going to do the emergency repairs that are necessary right away and then also identify the other repairs, replacement strategies and when they should be done. Another part that needs to be done is to be the dredging and that has to be permitted along with the dock repairs. And the question is, how do we fund this important infrastructure upgrade without spiking the tax rate? And the solution is the creation of a capital reserve fund. Thereby, when we know we have a specific investment we have to make in the future, instead of waiting to the last minute and then bonding, the other aspect is stop putting money aside, just like a little savings account to say, hey, we knew this was coming. Let's see what we can afford. Let's put that money aside. So what the selectmen are doing is creating this capital reserve fund. Again, we are developing construction plans, repairs strategies under Article 15 and the construction costs. We're also looking at the potential for other projects in this area in which would have to be coordinated with, to make sure that when this work is done, we don't spend money that is not wisely spent. The projects that are going to be coordinated with are the dockside restrooms, which again, if voted, will go in in 2018. A parking lot rehabilitation, which is a separate project, will probably be the last one in the schedule. And then the possibility of a dock expansion, which is a separate article and not to be funded by here. Our schedule for doing these work, like we said before, will be determined based on the engineering and the permitting done under Article 15. But the funding aspect of it, what we're looking to do is to start the fund and to be able to add to it each year so that we can avoid either a spike in the tax rate or avoid having to maybe do a big bond. And with that, I hope that people see the wisdom in creating these capital reserve funds and the wisdom in creating the asset management plan, developing these long-term strategies and then the, you know, going forward to vote to support the funding of this important project. Again, thank you.
Article 24 Dockside Parking Lot Capital Reserve Account. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be deposited in the existing dockside parking lot capital reserve account, which is under the custody of the trustees of trust funds. The selectmen have been designated as the agent to expend the funds in this capital reserve account fund. The estimated tax rate impact 2018 is 2.5 cents per thousand of assessed value. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. Recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero. A majority vote is required." I believe the capital reserve accounts are the best ways to spread the cost of smaller capital projects or costly vehicle purchases over a number of years. A capital reserve account is just like a savings account and is one of the ways to lessen the need to bond a project. This Warren article is seeking to add to an existing dockside parking lot capital reserve fund and I'll turn it over to Dave Ford now.
Thank you. My name is David Ford, Director of Public Works for the Town of Wolfboro and I'm here to speak to Article 24. The Dockside Parking Lot Capital Reserve Fund. We hear the problem is kind of obvious. If anyone's been down there, the parking lot has many sinkholes and very irregular surfaces. Yearly maintenance includes patching and cleanup, but each year, the problem seemed to get worse due to the heavy use and due to the fact that the base under the parking lot is really not what we call an engineered fill. And it was based, there's a lot of cribbing and it was filled over time and continues to be patched. In 2017, we had done some major sewer line repairs, so we have a big patch going in. And also, the end of this year and beginning of next year, we're completing the boat ramp upgrades, which is having, you know, an impact on the surface of the parking lot. The solution, in 2015, we appropriated $50,000 to do a detailed survey and we did test pits and borings through the parking lot to understand what was going on below. And based on those findings and surveys, we developed alternative plans. Those plans were presented to stakeholders at two different meetings, looking at the options we could in terms of maximizing parking spaces and to looking at alternatives for bringing in additional amenities for pedestrians, trees. And I think it was determined that we need to kind of focus on maintaining as many parking places as possible. Back then, the estimate was somewhere between 300,000 and 450,000. That project has been delayed due to the other needs down there and the fact that we didn't want to go ahead and put a new parking lot in and then have to stage other type of construction on there. So that project was delayed, but the selectmen decided, let's set up the capital reserve fund. So in 2016, the fund was set up and the voters did support it and we had initial funding of $100,000. This year, we're proposing to put in $50,000 and the hope would be that we could fund it at that rate for the next couple of years. And once we get up to the $300,000 mark, hopefully, we would be able to be the last project on the schedule here with the intent that we'd finish up the boat ramp this year. We would do the bathrooms in 2018 and then hopefully, the dock repairs and potential expansions could be done in 2019 and then the parking lot would come in around 2020 or '21. Again, this is really good, sound financial planning and we're hopeful that the voters will support us in this project. Thank you.
Dave Bowers again on Article 25. Fire Trucks and Apparatus Replacement Capital Reserve. The article reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $186,000 to be added to the existing fire trucks and apparatus replacement capital reserve fund to be under the custody of the trustees of trust funds. The selectmen have been designated as agents to expend the capital reserve account. The estimated tax impact is 9.4 cents per thousand of assessed valuation in 2018 and this has been passed unanimously by the Board of Selectmen and passed unanimously by the Budget Committee." I might mention, this isn't to purchase anything specific, but year by year, we add to the reserves, so when we do need to get a hook and ladder truck or a pumper or something, we have the money and don't have to have a multiple hundred thousand dollar request. Now, Tom Zade, long-term member of the fire department, is going to explain.
Thank you. Once again, as we have for the past several years, we're respectfully requesting the sum of $186,000 for the next year of the fire rescue trucks and apparatus capital reserve fund. Since we started this in approximately, I believe, 2005, this has allowed us to regularly place our apparatus at the end of its service life while at the same time equalizing the impact of that replacement on the tax rate. So as we move forward, we again ask for your support for the article requesting $186,000 for that capital reserve fund. Our plan in 2018 is to replace engine two, which although it's hard to believe for me because I was here when it was new, is now at its 20-year lifespan and is ready to be replaced. We've had a truck committee working for several months now on some generic specifications. So if we're successful and everything moves forward, we'll be in a position to move fairly quickly as it's typically a nine-to-12-month turnaround from the time we order a vehicle to the time it's actually delivered and we can put it into service. Again, so we would ask for your support. Should anyone have any specific questions, feel free to call me or Chief Pino at the station at 569-1400 or stop by and we'll be happy to show you. station at 569-1400 or stop by and we'll be happy to show you not only Engine 2 but the rest of the apparatus and let you know exactly what we're talking about.
Article 26, Public Works Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. Reads as follows. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $170,000 to be added to the existing public works vehicles and equipment capital reserve fund, to be under the custody of the trustees of trust funds, the Board of Selectmen has been designated as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. The estimated tax rate impact for 2018 is 8.6 cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero, recommended by the Budget Committee, eight to zero. Majority vote is required." This is the annual request for funding for the replacement schedule of over $3 million worth of vehicles and equipment without creating a spike in the tax rate. So I urge the voters to support this article and I will now turn it over to Dave Ford for further details.
Thank you. My name is David Ford. I'm the Director of Public Works for the Town of Wolfboro and I'm here to speak to Article 26, the Public Works Vehicle and Equipment Capital Reserve Fund. The problem, as stated, is how do we maintain our public works fleet without spiking the tax rate? And this particular capital reserve fund is specific to just the vehicles and equipment within the highway and solid waste divisions of the Public Works Department, of which we have over $3 million of equipment there. The solution, again, is to develop and to fund the capital reserve account. And in 2018, we are planning on replacing HD-7, which is a 2004 International Dump Truck, and replacing HD-27, which is a 1996 Leaf Vacuum Unit. Part of this plan is we do have a detailed inventory of all the vehicles and equipment with their current replacement costs and where do we think they need to be replaced on that schedule? And we try to follow best we can that long-term plan for replacing vehicles and equipment, but you never know when things could arise. This year, we are looking at, we've had a flat funding for the last couple of years at $170,000. This chart here, which I tried to blow up so we could see that each of the fiscal years, 17, 18, 19, going forward, it goes out even further and down, it explains what we're expecting to expend in a certain year and what we will have left at the end of the year with regards to the capital reserve fund. What's really good about this and it has been helpful when you have unexpected issues come up. Unfortunately, this year, we had an accident which one of our trucks was totaled. One of our employees was significantly hurt. Good news is he's recovering well and he's going to be coming back to work, hopefully, after he's done his rehabilitation. The bad news was, we had a pickup truck that had plenty of years left on it. It was totaled and we were able to receive a value of $22,000, which was pretty good for a pickup truck. But to go try to find a used pickup truck for $22,000 was going to be very difficult. We went to the selectmen. Because we have the capital reserve account, we were able to get very good discounts on new vehicles and for additional $8,000 taken from this parlayed with the money from the insurance, we will upgrade and get a brand-new truck, which is a much better value than having to buy a used truck. So the capital reserve funds, which are set to be spent by the Board of Selectmen at the discretion, is very useful and helpful to maintaining our equipment and going forward. And again, as we see, we do have a plan for all of our units going out there. And again, next year, we're looking at upgrading and replacing. Again, this is another asset management plan, if you will, using a different acronym. And again, we've been very successful in using it and we appreciate your support going forward. Thank you.
Hey, I'm Dave Senical. I'm going to present Article 27, which is the Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Account. It reads, "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $16,750 to be added to the existing Abenaki Ski Area Capital Reserve Fund, under the custody of the trustee of trust funds. Board of Selectmen has been designated as agents to expand these funds. Estimated tax rate for 2018 is .008 per thousand. It's recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero, recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of seven to one. Majority is required." I'm going to turn this over to the Director of Parks and Rec.
Thanks, Dave. Christine Collins, Recreation Director for Wolfboro. Today, I'm presenting Abenaki Ski Area, the Capital Reserve Account. We're requesting $16,750. This reserve account was established in 2013 and it was to help pay for items that were high-priced items that wouldn't necessarily be covered in the budget, such as a groomer, the rope. Abenaki is in its 82nd anniversary this year and so we're pretty excited to keep it up and running. It's the oldest ski resort in America, based on Ski New Hampshire magazine. And last, 2015, we just updated the lodge. So if you haven't been over there, you really want to stop in and see our new lodge. We have great groomers that have been making snow for our facility and grooming it. Our groomer is actually due for replacement this year, 2018. So we're in the search for finding one and we just really appreciate your support on this so we can help provide the best skiing in a local area for you. Thank you so much.
Article 28, Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Reserve Fund. Reads as follows. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $125,000 to be added to the existing wastewater treatment plant capital reserve fund, to be under the custody of the trustees of trust funds, the Board of Selectmen has been designated as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. The estimated tax rate impact for 2018 is 6.3 cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. This is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero and recommended by the Budget Committee for a vote of eight to zero. Majority vote is required. This is the fifth year of an eight-year plan to complete a million dollars' worth of work that was identified. Again, this annual funding maintains an even impact on the tax rate. So I urge the voters to support this article and I'll turn this over to Dave Ford for further details."
Hello. This is Dave Ford, Director of Public Works for the Town of Wolfboro. And I'm here to speak to Warren Article Number 28, Wastewater Treatment Plant Capital Reserve Fund. The problem with our facility is the plant is well over 40 years old and getting older by the day. Back in 2006 and 2007, engineers had recommended that we replace the plant at a cost of $14 million. At that time, we tried to push that off and we identified critical upgrades, which we have done over time. We did process changes in 2007 and 2008 at a cost of $195,000. In 2010, there was some ARRA money available and we were able to do a major upgrade with 50% grant money in 2010. That total project was over $780,000. And we've done other work in the spray area and buildings in 2012. However, we still have very old equipment, structures, and our systems are in need of attention. Our solution was, again, a kind of a stop-gap solution. We had done inventory and assessed conditions of the plants and at this point, back in 2014, we were looking at just the critical aspects of the plant and trying to determine where we have to go in the next eight years when we set up this original fund. Since the fund was set up in 2015, we replaced the emergency generator. Again, this is another, again, a story about why capital reserve funds are good. There was a grant available from the Homeland Security Department for $80,000, which we were able to use matching money from this fund to get that generator replaced. Now, it wasn't scheduled for a few years later, but it made plenty of sense to go ahead and up that up and it was done and successfully done and saving the town considerable amount of money. In 2016 and 17, we've been looking at the engineering of the sludge storage building, sludge pumps, and looking at buried pipes and buried valves in our electrical systems. Unfortunately, in 2017, we did our sludge storage building, did fail. The roof collapsed and as a result, we did have a settlement on that and we are working with that settlement in addition to these funds to have that replacement. Again, it just shows to the good practice of having the plan in place allowed us to react and to hopefully spend our money wisely. Again, this cost is part of a $1 million project, which is over the eight years, and this year, again, we're looking at $125,000 to fund that. This is our schedule, again, which is hard to see with the different priority projects are and in 2017, what we planned on spending and in 2018, going forward with the electrical upgrades and the buried piping and then looking at our aeration basins, diffusers, to make for more efficient operation. Again, this is a very important project. We appreciate the support in the past and hopefully you'll support this this year. Thank you.
Article 29, Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. "To see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to be added to the existing building maintenance capital reserve fund, established for the purpose of making needed repairs and performing needing maintenance to the town's building facilities, to be under the custody of the trustees of trust funds, the Board of Selectmen have been designated as agents to expend this capital reserve fund. Estimated tax rate impact 2018 is 3.8 cents per thousand of assessed valuation, recommended by the Board of Selectmen, five to zero, recommended by the Budget Committee, eight to zero. Majority vote required. When I came onto the Board of Selectmen in 2005, the town buildings were in disrepair. Over the last 12 years, the town voters have supported improvements to town buildings, such as the train station and the town hall, just to mention a few. This Warren article will provide funds to make needed repairs and maintenance to town buildings." And I'll turn it over to Dave Ford.
Thank you. I am Dave Ford, Director of Public Works for the Town of Wolfboro and here to speak to Article 29, Building Maintenance Capital Reserve Fund. The problem is the town owns and is responsible for 23 buildings. This inventory does not include buildings owned by the Electric Department, the Water Department, the Sewer Department, or any other enterprise funds. Now, the buildings have been maintained and I think each of the building department heads who are responsible for building have done their best to do what we call crisis management, keeping things going. However, roofs, heating systems, plumbing systems, they maybe need to be updating. Those are things we put off, we put off, we put off. And the intent with this fund is to have a, where all our maintenance funds can go to one spot to be able to react to problems these buildings may have occurred because we keep kind of extending their useful life and we never know what's going to break. Will it be an air conditioning in one building? Will it be a sewer pipe over here? Or will it be something more significant? Last year, we were working a dockside restaurant. We thought we had a minor repair, turned into a major repair. If it weren't for these funds, we would not have been able to complete that repair. We might have had to close down the kitchen at the dockside restaurant. So this, these funds were very important and helpful. Again, the solution being as the selectmen have decided to create the capital reserve fund, which is done in 2016. Now, the one thing we are behind on, and this is kind of my fault, the selectmen have been pushing to have a detailed inventory of all the buildings and identification of all the assets within the buildings and where they are with regard to their useful life and when do we need to repair or replace them. Well, as I found out, that's no easy task. And as we've talked about in previous articles, all the different areas we are working on, whether it be the roads, our stormwater systems, our sewer systems, buildings is perhaps one of our biggest assets and one of the ones where we are behind. We are making special efforts at the end of this in 2017 and going into 2018 for coming up with a system that will be workable. So we not only have to make sure we have the appropriate inventory and the assessment, but we got to be able to maintain that as we go forward so that if we have an emergency repair, that's going to get logged into the plan and we have to make sure the plan then is adjusted to make sure that we acknowledge these repairs going forward. The other aspect of it would be to develop the cost for these repairs and disparts. And once we find that out, we can have a lot more backing behind this. But I'm here to tell you that within those 23 buildings and the millions and millions of dollars of real estate we own, we have much needs out there and that I think what we try to do with our repairs, we try to prioritize these. But in setting up the fund, in 2016, we had $30,000. In 17, we grew it to $50,000. And then this year, we've grown another $25,000 to $75,000. And I can say that's still way underfunded and that the plan is in 2018, we'll develop this asset management plan to fill in the details why we need this money and also how we can make sure we're spending it wisely going forward. Again, I think we started off with many Warren Articles about talking about asset management and I think if every article you look at, it really comes down to asset management. And again, this is another big one for us and we're hopeful that the voters will support us. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'll be introducing Article 30, the Libby Museum Feasibility Study. The article reads as follows. "To see if the town will raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000, of which about two-thirds of the cost will be borne by a private foundation and one-third by the town, for the purpose of conducting a feasibility study on design options to best accommodate both the current Libby museum collection and additions to it by approving and/or expanding the existing historic museum building, further to authorize the selectmen to accept the monies from private foundation to be used for said purpose. The amount to be raised by general taxation shall not exceed $25,000. Estimated tax rate impact for 2018 is 1.3 cents per thousand dollars of assessed valuation. It is recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero and recommended by the Budget Committee by a vote of eight to zero, and a majority vote is required for this article. The Libby Museum has been offered a private collection of over 200 North American mammals in museum-quality condition. A private foundation has stepped forward to fund two-thirds of the study, which will reduce the town's portion to $25,000. I urge the voters to support this article and I'll now turn it over to our Director, Alana Hallby. Thank you."
Thank you very much, Brad, and thank you very much for inviting me here today to speak about the Warren Article for the Libby Museum. Many of you will know the Libby Museum as one of the most historic buildings in the Town of Wolfboro. Not only is it known for its historic status as a building, but also for its beautiful scenic setting. Many generations come to visit the Libby, summer after summer, and many residents have gone there during their school days. It was designed by Dr. Henry Forrest Libby in 1912 and was built from timber from Rattlesnake Island, which he owned at the time, and by many of the local tradesmen who assisted in building it. It's made of timber frame despite it looking like a plaster building from the outside. It's actually timber-framed, hollow-walled, with a fieldstone foundation and a metal roof. Its floor area is about 5,000 square feet. Whoops, just a second. The problem we have at the moment is that it's uninsulated and unheated and now that it's over 100 years old, its problem of conserving the artifacts that are in it is showing its wear and tear. Dr. Libby's original collection is still much loved by many people and is sustaining deterioration from light, moisture, and fluctuating temperatures each year. We also, as Brad Harriman mentioned, have the opportunity of a 200-plus North American mammal collection to add, but that is conditional on the museum being restored to museum standards so that it would be temperature, light, and moisture-controlled. We're proposing a feasibility study as a first step and what we'd like to do is look at two to three schematic options for how the internal workings of the museum might be adjusted. For those who have been there, they'll know that it's essentially one large room with a very small toilet. And we will present options that will keep the facade as it is to the extent possible. That will be presented with general costings to the public for discussion. And once the preferred option is chosen, Phase 2 for construction costs and detailed drawings will be undertaken. We're very grateful for the donor who has offered to fund two-thirds of this feasibility study and we hope that the residents of Wolfboro will assist by filling the gap. Thank you very much.
Article 31, this is the Lakes Region Model Railroad Museum Extension of Time. This article reads, "To see if the town will vote to amend Article 22, approved by the voters at the 2017 town meeting, by extending the deadline for the town's receipt of private funds from December 31, 2018 to December 31, 2021. The 2017 Water article, Article 22..." The 2017 Water Cardle Article 22 established a capital reserve fund for the purpose of renovating the old railroad freight house building at 61 Railroad Avenue and raised and appropriated the sum of $95,000 to be placed in said capital reserve fund. And the town's expenditure of said amount was contingent upon the raising of private funds for this said purpose. The expenditure of the funds appropriated by the town in 2017 shall continue to be contingent upon the town's receipt of private funds being raised for that said purpose. The present article shall not raise any additional town funds. It's recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of five to zero. Majority vote required." Article 32, Authorization for Prepayment of Taxes. "To see if the town will adopt the provisions of RSA 80:52-A, which will authorize the prepayment of taxes and will authorize the collector of taxes to accept payments in prepayment of taxes. Recommended by the Board of Selectmen by a vote of four to zero. Majority vote required." Thank you all for joining us today in this presentation of the 2018 Warren Articles for the Town of Wolfboro Budget. The deliberative session for the Town of Wolfboro will be February 6, 2018, at 7:00 PM at the Great Hall. Voting will occur on March 13 from 8:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the Great Hall. Thanks again for joining us.